We're here this evening, it's Tuesday, May 7th. The Newcastle Planning Board. Our first item has been withdrawn from the tonight's agenda. This was the Colav 8 to Centeno, right?
Yes.
I'm hearing voices, more than usual.
I did, but I thought we were gonna do some administrative stuff. Wally, no?
Oh, yes. Yes, well, once we get the motion, we can go on and everything else.
Oh, okay.
Good point, yes. So I just want to point out that the first item will not be on the agenda. I guess the first matter is to take the motion to begin the meeting, start the meeting. Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? This evening, Jeff will be filling in on all items this evening as our sub, and he'll be hearing things and voting on these this evening. And took me a couple meetings and finally got his name straight, and this is really great. Oh goodness, okay. The first item this evening will be Schwartz, this is 6 Breckenridge Road. This is an application for a site development approval, application for a stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control entry permit for removal of existing half basketball court, expansion of driveway, and planting of trees. I think this comes to us from the court. This is a violation matter?
Yes, that's correct. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Cohen, I'm associate at Zerriman Steinhutts. Here tonight on behalf of Paul and Lindsay Schwartz, the owners of 6 Breckenridge. Here with me tonight, I have Paul Schwartz, the owner, Alan Pilch, and also Stephen Coleman on duty. So this is an application for site plan approval of the driveway improvements. Specifically, the applicants are proposing to modify their driveway to add some space in order to allow cars to back up more easily and also to add a space for the kids to play in the driveway. They are also proposing to move the basketball hoop that is currently on the basketball court in the rear of the property to this new driveway space, and they are proposing to remove the court entirely. So, a bit of background on this. This basketball court was admittedly constructed without town approvals and was also inadvertently located partially on the neighboring property. So violations were issued and the applicants have been working with town staff over the past year on a resolution. So initially, the applicants were considering to legalize the existing court. However, that would involve some variances from the CBA as well as an agreement with the neighboring property owners to legalize the encroachment. Since then, the applicants have decided that the best course of action was to simply remove the court and to make some modifications to the existing driveway. And we believe that this proposal, this proposal that's before you now, is a minor site plan amendment. There are no issues of coverage, there are no variances needed. And so we are seeking approval of the site plan as well as approval of the tree mitigation plan for the prior tree removal. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Alan, just to take you through the plans.
Good evening, Alan Pilch, ALP Engineering, please be with the board. I think that Jacqueline actually summarized it very well. So that what's being proposed is, first of all, the removal of the half basketball court, which as you can see straddles the property line. So, the actual half basketball court is 1,785 square feet in total area. And the basketball hoop as well, like the base court, will also be relocated to the new driveway slash place space that's being proposed. The definitely indicated to the driveway itself is going to be expanded to the apartment or glass. It makes it much more accessible. I know certainly when I was over at the property, I used to park on the street because it just seemed awkward to really use that space, so that's what's being done. And the proposed curved line is just over 37 feet, I think it is, from the property line. So it actually meets the codes. We're also proposing to repaint the existing driveway surface, which is presently deteriorated, so that's one of the items that's being done. And we're planning to get a total of 19 trees, 17 planted on the Schwartz property, indicated here on this plan. Basically to restore some woods that were removed on the property, including the basketball court and two of the trees that they actually located on the neighboring property as mitigation, if you will, for trees that were moved in that area. I would point out, if you see that line, there is a fence line that's been there, I think, for like 30 plus years or so, which is probably not on the property line, but that's what I do. But that's, I think that somewhat led to the issue of construction. So overall, if the changes in the property, there'll be a reduction in the amount of impervious surface on the Schwartz property by 863 square feet. That's a reduction of 863. And that's from the removal on the half basketball court and the small expansion of the driveway to accommodate that new place space. And there would be a reduction on the Alexander property by 338 square feet total. And I think with that, that kind of summarizes a little more detail on the site plan. I don't know if you want to have Steve perhaps talk about the tree? Steve, if you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. The original tree permit was completed 35 trees or maybe a little bit from the side, which 12 required a tree replacement as per chapter 122. And those 12 trees represent 33 new trees. And the current proposal, as Alan indicated, is adding 17 new trees onto the property representing, you know, six species of native canopy trees. And the allowance of the 16 trees would be addressed via a contribution to the Tree Bagged Fund. And also, as Alan noted, there are two additional trees that were planted in cooperation with the neighbor on the neighbor's property. And those two trees are not part of the tree replacement plan.
I'd also just like to add that some of the trees have really been strategically placed. Certainly the ones along that western property line to the south of the Newcastle Park have been placed there with, you know, part of discussions with the neighbor of the Alexanders in order to provide some screening from the new expanded parking area and new pool of place space. So that was also part of the planning that was done. First, we actually planned evergreen trees in order to screen and replace essentially around the property line.
Did, when discussing trees on neighbors' property, was two their preferred number or was two what you guys just decided to give them?
I think they did not want to have it sort of restored that way. There is quite a slope from that, I'll say, from that fence line down into their property, but even as a maybe they were satisfied with that. There are a couple trees that do remain on that portion of it, and they were quite satisfied with planting two on that property.
Steve, Colin, I have a question for you. How were you able to determine the number of trees that had been removed? Because as I understand it, people, Dennis and yourself, were engaged in this property after the trees were removed and after there had been excavation. And I find it interesting that the Alpine Tree Service bill, or where it was here, their inventory is substantially larger than yours. Many were trees involved. I just counted very quickly, I looked at maybe about 18 or 19 regulated trees on the Alpine inventory. I would suggest that that might be more accurate because I'm sure that's what the billing was based on, those trees that were cleared by Alpine. So I'm just wondering how, I know Dennis wasn't, well, I hear from Dennis, but I know Dennis was frustrated because he really didn't know what had happened here. Because we got involved in this after the fact. So I'm just wondering how you know about these tall trees and not all these others that Alpine removed?
What, to address that question, what I did is I performed a tree inventory using the available survey that was done by Rowan, and a survey that was done in 2020. And that showed all the existing trees on the property. So I did an inventory and examined each of the trees, and then the ones that were not, that were served to be present anymore. You know, the survey had approximate diameter on them, listed for each tree. You know, so I just, the process of going through and documenting the trees remaining, we were able to, you know, determine the number of trees, you know, that were subject to replacement based on the diameter of the trees. You know, so I took that information and worked with Dennis, you know, to say that we, you know, could come to an agreement on whether we thought was the number of trees that needed to be replaced. And that's the number of, you know, 12 trees, you know, is probably came up with that. No, I mean, I don't know how else we could have done it because, you know, but I think the survey was reasonably accurate in terms of, you know, providing, you know, the location of the trees.
I think going to Alpine's bill, I don't stay deep on this, but I think that might have been a better place to start, frankly, because it clearly shows by number which trees, where they were located, even a brief summary of the size of them. And so we're talking about some very significant trees that were cleared here. These were specimen trees, all of which were regulated. A lot of these were smaller, of course, as you point out, Steve, they were not regulated. So I'm just wondering at the accuracy of that process that we put together here. And again, since I understand that there's been excavation and the property itself has been reformed, if you will, whether or not some of those tree stumps have been buried. And again, why would we not have relied on the Alpine inventory?
So, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, we did look at the Alpine information. And if you look at, you know, a lot of them are indicated, some of those specimen trees indicated no replacement. I do not know the reasoning behind that. You know, but that was used also to help us, you know, get to the number that made sense. And, you know, that's why through process of elimination and looking at, you know, the survey and the Alpine data, you know, we were able to come up with, we thought it was reasonable as to 12 trees, you know, that would have been subject to replacement.
And Mr. Schwartz can provide some more color on the Alpine?
Just the one thing, was that the Alpine list, we ended up not going forward with Alpine. So that list is more than what was actually removed. And there's still trees still there that was on that list that we didn't actually remove. So that's why when they actually went through the list, the inventory was less. And there's still trees from that list on the property, and we didn't use Alpine.
But there, thank you. There are, however, 33 trees that are to be removed, is that right?
Back then?
Have been removed?
No, way less than that. That's what I'm trying to say. Alpine wasn't actually...
This memo, I'm sorry, maybe Dennis can help. Excuse me, go ahead.
I was just saying, that was the original proposal in 2020. The survey that was used to get the inventory right was done concurrently with that. But then we didn't do the project. The actual removal of much less trees occurred in the fall of '21, Dennis? Is that correct? No, fall of '22, because you issued the ticket, I think, last year in April.
Well, I wonder how many fewer trees were actually cleared? When I look at a picture of a basketball court with no trees, and I look at a side yard where there are no trees, it's all lawn. So, it appeared to me that the majority of the trees that are on the Alpine list were in fact clear. There are a couple of trees left, absolutely, no question about it. I'm not so sure, again, I'm not quite sure what the Alpine inventory shows. I presume the ones with Xs were the ones that were going to come down. But it's quite clear from the pictures that most of these trees are gone, and they were cleared.
I, okay, agree to disagree, because that list was not the list used for what was removed.
I understand, but how do you explain the empty yard?
Because that's not where all the trees were. That, I mean, it's on the survey.
That's what my point is.
That's not where the trees all were, meaning we didn't remove... I mean, we could go, the inventory of what was proposed back then, once we went through the process with Dennis, it was just way too much. Wasn't worth it, didn't make sense. So what was actually removed was far less trees, is what I'm trying to say. And a lot of the trees are still back there. You could, and in the front, and on the side. But, yeah, that's all. I just don't, I don't want us to rely on a list that's not accurate. That was more the point of the Alpine list. The survey is, and then what's there instead of what's on the survey is what we...
So the survey relied on was done before any trees were removed?
Yes, that's what I was trying to...
Did the tree, did that survey actually survey the trees? Did it identify the trees? As we customarily do with a tree permit, that is identify the tree, identify the species, identify the condition. I would suggest a land survey, showing the space on land. They show the location of the trees and size of the trees on that survey? I haven't seen that, have you seen this? I don't, we don't, the survey?
I'm happy to answer your question. The survey showed the species and the diameter, you know, based on the time of their survey.
I apologize for bringing it this way, but I will.
So what's the date of the survey then?
November 19th, 2020.
And what's the date of the document, as far as you can tell, the Alpine document? There's no data on it, but do you know what it was on? Anybody?
Sure. From the original application, that was dated 1/21/21. And I know I've completed a couple of, there are review letters, we call them pending tree removal permits. And so what you're looking at, I mean, this is all my handwriting. And that's kind of what I started with, because that's what was applied for. And then, you know, as Mr. Schwartz indicated, it was communicated, it was just over a phone conversation, that they were abandoning a project, the project, I, you know, and at the time, it was just going to be tree removal and landscaping to, you know, sort of change obviously the character of the yard. So I was just sort of responding to after the fact, which is, you know, kind of what the pictures are there. So Steve and I, I gave him this list saying, you know, this is all the information that I have. And, you know, I really have no... He was the one who completed, I would say, the follow-up assessments post-removal. And I just, you know, tried to document what was existing at the time relative to this application that was submitted, which was, you know, trees that are inventoried as shown. Again, the majority were in the back. And just my notes and going through, you know, what data did not require replacement based on any variety of factors. I mean, some I went so far as to say that we did, but, you know, others, especially the first four in the front, you know, the septic was there, the house was there, you know. One, I remember one of them being a tulip, which looked a little so, you know, that potentially hazardous location caveat in the code, because you're evaluating it based on the existing structure. But still, it's, again, I know this project aimed to be abandoned, but it's just funny because of the replacement numbers, you know, seem to mimic kind of what the total tally is here. I, you know, I didn't, I didn't, you know, manipulate that, that's just kind of how it worked out, so.
So, maybe, I'd like to maybe suggest that maybe we need another document here, which is essentially that survey, which is 2020?
2020.
As the, as sort of the baseline of the trees that were there in 2020, the trees that are there now. And the work that the applicant would like to do in order to restore the property, to do what the applicant wants to do with a piece of property, so that we can see, have an actual sense of how many trees have been removed and which ones have been removed and where. And which ones want to be, are asked to be used as credit for replacement. We just don't, I don't have that, I don't think we have that document yet.
I don't think, I don't know if it exists, I don't know if we can really, if it will ever exist. Again, we're looking at this unfortunately after the fact. And I, my observation is, this is one of the more egregious violations I've seen in all the years serving in the town for tree clearing. And also a thing, from what I understand, re-excavating the site. This was a conservation subdivision, which unfortunately, I think, out of fairness to the applicant, I'm not quite sure what legal notice is about when you buy a house. You should be better on that, I think. But it's a conservation subdivision. This is an area of a lot of hills, and it's kind of a very special area. It's a wooded area. And what happened was, this was cleared and without permits. And again, the size of the trees, the number of trees, whatever that number is, this is a fairly serious violation. And I'm not sure, Dennis, we have to rely on you in terms of what your thoughts are in terms of restoration. To, we also know when you have trees like that, you also have a forested ground. You have undulated property. This has all been smoothed out. So that would be, I think, frankly, our pages to ask the applicant to try to restore that. But within some sort of reason, the natural foliation, the natural field should be restored. This was a conservation subdivision. And it was as such for a good reason when the plan were first granted this subdivision many years ago. A sensitive property.
Right, I mean, just to that, so, you know, that's why even my memo is tailored to, you know, the tree code as it's written, there's an accounting element to that, for sure. If it's going to rise to another level, then the accounting kind of starts getting pushed to the side. And it's like, okay, what are you planting, where is it going? What is it contiguous to, what are you trying, like you said, to restore to? That's another approach asked, and so...
Well, Sabrina, do we, let me run through your...
I just have one question.
Sure, sure. Yes, Jim?
On page S102, right, there shows existing trees. And then, it's not labeled, but I think it's page four of the memo. Right, there's a, and who created this? Is this, was this a...
Alpine guys.
So, I'm just looking like 31, 32, 33, Dennis. Do you go and you review, like I'm looking at page, looks like there's three trees that are clustered in the back. If you, when you went to the site during your inspection, did you, like, does this align with what is, you know, these trees that align that are on page S102? So, and the basis of this survey here, or these, it says it's Rowan. Is that the same group that did that in there? So can we not, is it not, the survey that's on that page, is that not shown right here in S102 of the existing trees that are there? Or that will remain after the survey? Say it?
They're not numbered the same way.
No, I think these are the existing, because you look, it doesn't show two new trees back here, like that whole group. Alright, so, Dennis, seems like you've been out there a bunch of times. Right, is there a correlation to these and where we actually have the information on this one? That's my question.
But Jeff, I think you're looking at the front of the yard, which is unimpacted. It's the rear of the building, in the corners, where if you look, there virtually no trees in the back.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I was just, this says 35 trees on it?
Yes.
Right? 31, 32, 33? And that is, are those those three that are, that are in the back on, you know, what page, south?
I don't think they correlate, but they, because alpines, I think, were all on the back, yeah.
I guess not, they're not on the back. That's why I was trying to explain a bunch are in the front that we did not take out.
Right, we know that, we understand that.
Yeah, we, and I, I guess I... I'm suggesting that the less of dispute or concern of the trees that remain and or concern the trees that have been taken out.
Of course.
Right, and so there's a number, and I still don't understand, 33, but they're not 33, or you're going to replace 12, 15. And so I'm looking at the Alpine, you're saying, well, not all the trees... I think you're saying, let me just finish, that not all the trees that are on the Alpine survey have been taken out?
Correct, not even close.
Okay, we, I think it would be good to know which ones remain. And is, and how many have been, and how many, and how many have been taken out, and where they have been taken out? That, I suggest that that be put on one drawing, so that I think we can see what has happened over time to this piece of property and the conservation easement. And we can make some fair judgments about what to do about that, whether it's a concern or not a concern. We don't know how big a concern it might be, but I don't, because I don't have the information yet.
I was gonna say, I think drawing S102 does show the location of trees that were made on the property. Right. I mean, to show the ones that were moved, what are you saying that should be like?
I think what Tom is saying is, you take the older survey and use that as a baseline, and then with the existing, then we'll know exactly which ones are missing.
And I understand that the Alpine sketch is not drawn to scale, and it's very rough. But it seems to me that most of those trees are the ones that, we're not dealing at all with the ones in the front that continue to exist. Everything seems to be on, nearly everything seems to be in the back. So that's my concern, and that's where we know that trees were cleared. We don't know how many. But from my perspective, way too many were cleared. And I will give you my heads up on it, and that is that I don't think that the town should be accommodating the applicant for an expanded driveway. I will be voting against that, because I think this is an outrageous, egregious violation of tree ordinance. And obviously, we have to work on a restoration plan, but in terms of additional encroachments and additional construction, expansion. Not for me.
Right, and we are absolutely working with the town in, you know, doing proper mitigation for the tree removal. As Stephen explained, we have done, you know, we've worked with Dennis for, over the past year, to come up with a mitigation plan using the prior survey and also going out. I know Dennis has been out to the property, Stephen's been out to the property a number of times. So we're using the best information available. Of course, we understand, it's, of course, we understand that the trees were removed without a permit, and we are working with the town to mitigate that. If there's anything specifically that you're looking for that we can have some clear direction and, you know, what might be helpful for you to evaluate those trees and to make a determination on proper mitigation?
Well, I think we should, does anyone else have any questions? If not, I think we should turn to Sabrina, Bob, and Dennis and give their information on their memos. Sabrina, do you have any thoughts?
Sure, I'm gonna stay away from the tree discussion and just talk to the zoning components table. There is a reference to a rear yard setback changing. The rear yard setback doesn't change, it goes to the main house. So that should go revert back to existing unless you plan on doing something to the rear of the house. In regards to coverage, the building and the development coverage are conforming with the town code. As a conservation subdivision, the year that this conservation subdivision was created, there was no specificity regarding coverage in the resolution. So we revert back to the town code, and there are no incidences of the maximum allowable. So that's, even with the proposed expansion of the driveway. And that's all that comes out of it, it was a type of two actions in the form of the city environment, all in the union.
Okay, thank you. Bob, you have some thoughts?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Yeah, basically, number one, basically, just the coordination between the three applications they submitted, the DC orders of intent, stormwater application, sure, they all have different numbers in the declaring and the service, a pretty substantial amount, they might want to coordinate. Sure, the A F will have different numbers in the, in the hearing, and the disturbance, a pretty substantial amount, they might want to coordinate, that's what they all are the same. Uh, number two, the contractor's information should be completed and signed, that's number two. Number three, limits of disturbance, I cannot find it on the plans, I could be blind sometimes, I miss things, but I did check several times, I cannot see it. So please put on that S one oh two. Uh, should provide tree, tree protection details if the planning board is inclined to approve your application. And the extension of driveway. And I guess it was a topic of discussion previously, I never remember seeing a survey that showed those trees, it was never part of the application, these I never saw. Uh, it's clearly shown on Alan's plans as a survey, or I imagine it was a parking lot survey. I would recommend to let the planning board see that, it was never submitted. Um, and also the site plan should submit the existing onsite waste water treatment system that will definitely be needed. On the building permits side, you require on every site plan you look at, even if it's in the front of the property, it's important for it to show that. And number eight, these are all general notes, one of them being possibly to fill. That's gonna be brought to the site again, if the planning board allows this to be taking place. Uh, with fills with the manifest, we'll get it from, we would like to get it to fill from a good dealer. Reputable dealers around the Worcestershire County area. And as built and standard, that's what we would have pretty much a site plan, and that we need a little bit of a building program level than the planning board level. And then those are my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, Dennis, you have some thoughts?
Sure, I think some of them you've already elaborated on and echoed. I just, to your point, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a change in habitat, for sure. And, you know, it's, I like that phrase, it's, you know, from the ecological communities in New York State, a physical confirmation of a land form. And that's, describes the cultural category for ecology, which means it's, you know, all, you know, human, human influence. So, um, other than that, it was just going through, as I said, you know, how the code is written in terms of the accounting. And obviously, the opportunity to come up with alternatives in compliance with the code can occur, obviously, as, as a matter of fact. And, you know, on the spreadsheet, you know, this is how the proposal was to, to meet replacement. Obviously, I just brought up the, you know, understory, because none of the trees that were proposed were understory. Uh, so there needed to be a certain percentage of those, if you wanted to be consistent with one twenty-one six. So the treatment fund contribution presumably would be, you know, making up for that. But again, all of this is, you know, predicated on that, you know, there's agreement and consistency from the org, because you were now the approving authority.
So your recommendation would be that we would supplement wherever they have so far for the planning plan with shrubs? That might also help with, you know, compliance and perhaps, you know, reduce the, the tree thing.
Right, and if you're, you know, speaking, you know, to the R word, restoration versus the R word, replacement, then, you know, obviously that creates structure of a, of a community and, you know, provides, you know, that understory opportunity for a whole bunch of credit and power.
Comments, questions from board members? Uh, I, I don't know if, if anyone's here for this application, we, it's not a public hearing, but if anyone's here for this, we can certainly take an observation or question if not. Don't feel obligated.
I, I did, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused about, there is a reference here to twelve trees that must be replaced. I think that's the term that's used. Uh, there, I couldn't find in the drawings anywhere, maybe I just didn't see it, but where the trees, these twelve trees are that will be removed. Are they on a, a drawing somewhere that shows those trees?
There are no additional trees that are proposed to be removed, period.
So these are twelve trees that have already been removed?
I gather, yes.
And must, and must, must remain removed because of the improvements, it's kind of confusing.
Yes, so the, so the calculation was twelve trees that had been removed, that were regulated and required for replacement and mitigation. Um, Stephen, I don't know if you wanna provide some more color to that?
Um, based, based on, on the tree code, you know, we, you know, working with Dennis, we determined that twelve of the thirty-five trees originally were subject to replacement, meaning that they were of significant size.
Got it.
You know, to require replacements, so that, that's the number that's used to determine, you know, the replacement percentage.
Okay, good, thank you. Thanks, Steve.
And no, no other trees are proposed to be removed, that are remaining.
Right.
So, um, just one of the things that, I mean, it's not just about the aesthetics, as, as I think that Dennis has said. It's, it's about the, you know, the environment, especially in a conservation subdivision. It's about tree canopy, it's about soil retention, it's about all the things that, that trees do. And so, the, I personally am not a fan of the tree bank as a solution in this particular case. Well, what I think we've done to try to do in the past, when we can, is when it's, when, when trees need to be replaced, we ask that they, if at all possible, be replaced on, on site in order to retain the tree canopy and retain the character of the, of the neighborhood and all of its aesthetic and the ecological, for ecological reasons, as opposed to putting money in the tree bank. So I'd like you to keep that in mind as you guys work forward with the town on figuring out, you know, what we can do here in order to, to solve the problem. But at a minimum, as a beginning, I think we need that drawing, I think I need that drawing that shows, you know, the survey, twenty twenty survey, the trees that aren't there anymore, and the trees that you want to put in uh, in order to do your, and maybe not even to do your proposal, because I think there's some resistance here until we figure out what we're doing with this, with the property.
Dennis, can the tree bank money be used for understory trees?
Yes, and shrubs also, eight, eight per tree. And, um, as, as the conservation board once mentioned to me that, you know, again, moving away from accounting, that that was sort of the purpose of bringing in the shrub component, sort of to allow for structure. You know, not even just canopy and understory, so, yes, it would very much apply in this case.
And I think would be very appropriate with this one, because we're talking about, I think, restoration, not just replacement, just not the numerical replacement. So to the greatest extent possible, within reason, this should be a restoration project. And use understory literally to get to, to that, that solution. You know, I, after Tom's comment about the tree bank in this particular case, would love to see it not be a factor whatsoever. And that you guys come up with something that's creative, that restores property to the greatest extent possible. All right, I think we're, I think we're set. All right? So, uh, we'll look forward to receipt of the survey and the additional information, and then when you're set, we'll get in for another continued informal hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next matter is a concept plan, this is C G Homes LLC, this is at Forest fifty-six and Forest sixty-two, Armagh Road. This is an application for including our subdivision plan approval, application of stormwater management, erosion, sedimentation control, and tree removal requirement for the construction of a pool lot subdivision. We looked at this a couple of weeks ago, and we'd asked the applicant to come back with just some plans since, rather than spending a ton of money and effort on, on the details. So you wanted us to get an idea of what the, the layout, what might be the best layout.
Yep, so Ralph Alphazetti in Janford Project. Um, so, uh, just to summarize, it's a two lot, it's, there's two existing lots right now, which are proposing subdivision into four lots. We had one common driveway servicing all four lots, board wasn't too thrilled about that idea. Um, so we broke it up into two driveways serving two lots each. Um, we gave two different options. One, 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 all the tree removal, all the options generally the same, we're all around one hundred and five, one hundred and ten trees. Um, just do-
Do we have the two maps that we can show?
I have one here also.
Sabrina, can you put those up?
I am trying to load them, I'm getting to be some issues with the file that I have, if you can get me along with that.
Okay, thank you.
So I brought them here, hard copies, um, this is Armagh Road here, um, these are our pool houses. Uh, one, one option is driveway here, splits off into these two lots. This, same here, comes in, and these, these are much, much easier. Lots three and four are much easier, it's flatter, um, it's really not that much of an issue. These two were probably the ones that the board didn't like as much. So we, we have this one driveway that comes around here, it does not, you know, it's not really in the front of this house. And our other option is to come in all the way over here, and it kind of comes through the front of this house. This is a gentler grade, um, it's around twelve percent. This one is around fourteen percent driveway grade. I believe one other thing the board asked us to look at was to increase the size of this lot, we did make it wider. And we did increase the size of this house, it is now a three, that box you see there is a three thousand square foot footprint. Uh, we do show a pool, um, on the side of it or behind it, however you wanna look at it. We've also increased the size of those houses, those are showing a four thousand square foot footprint on each house. The model that the applicant is looking to build that is probably not gonna be as big as this, but just wanted to show something, you know, as big as we can get, basically.
Okay.
Does option B use the existing curb cut?
This one here?
No, that's option A, right?
Uh, this is option A, correct, no.
So option B, does it use, is it using the existing curb cut, or have you, have you moved away from trying to reuse that?
Uh, no, that's, that's right about where it is.
That's, okay, yes.
So there was an existing house also here-
Right.
In this location, it has been taken down since.
So, there's not, uh-
Is there any better than what, the first time we saw it?
Well, we had the first time, we had problems with the four lots off the same driveway, which would require a, a lift. Normally, you don't go any higher than thirty, so, uh, the afterwards come back, these alternatives has resulted.
Can I ask, um, I'm just looking at lot one right now, but I think there are some concerns about a couple of the other ones. From the upper left-hand corner end plan to the lower right-hand corner, it's about a twenty-foot draw.
Uh, you're talking about this lot?
Yeah. So, um, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know you can build on that sort of slope, but it takes a special kind of a custom building to do that. Is there, can you explain, is, what sort of grading you think you anticipate in order to create a path for these lots? Or will they be on, on post, how do you plan to build?
Well, this area here is not to be touched. Where it's, it's, it's pretty steep up in this corner here, and we're not, we're not touching that.
I'm talking about where the building is.
Here.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, but it does start to flatten out a bit in this area.
It's, it's, it's twenty feet.
We're gonna, we're gonna be cutting this slope, cutting, you know, this side of the slope, and making a flat plateau. You know, we're gonna cut here, fill on this side.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's, it's done, it's not, it's not an uncommon thing.
I know it's, yeah, I, I understand, I, I know it's done. It's the consequences of doing it, that, um, and what that means to the surrounding landscape and drainage and all those things that we're supposed to be worried about here. And I, I mean, I'm looking at, for instance, the, the area you have on lot one for the, um, for the, uh, the, the pan in front of the garage. It looks like it's about a twelve-foot slope from right to left. And so I, I just think we need to have grading plans, because the impacts of the development on the site are gonna be much greater than just the overall profile of the improvement itself.
Correct, I think the ones that you have do not have grading, this does have grading on it. I know, you know, I can't look at it in digestives right at this moment. Um, but we do flatten out this, this area here.
Can I see that? Good, thank you.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, what, what are your thoughts on the alternative with a fourteen grade driveway?
Fourteen percent grade is the maximum gradient that is allowed, I, you could go up to sixteen. Uh, fourteen is satisfactory, I have no objection to fourteen, as long as it stays at fourteen. But the thing you have to worry about is the deflection angles coming out of the hood grades. And when you have the roof of a geometry, that's gonna be, you'll look at quite carefully. Because a lot of times, in my experience, if you have these driveways, when you have maximum grades like that, you gotta be very careful about the deflection angle. Change of grade from grade, 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 so. Fourteen, it's not uncommon, that's why the board can't worry about that. Uh, it is not uncommon, and so we just subdivision afterward, that'd be the max. Although I think in the subdivision regulations, it does say twelve percent max, and fourteen under extenuating circumstances, so. And it's something we really have to look at in greater detail when they get to a better point. I believe this is twelve is max, but it needs a good rule by the board and the town engineer to go up fourteen, so. I'll go ahead and answer your question.
Yeah, thank you, that was my recollection, that it was twelve and then fourteen was an exception that we could look at.
Have you, um, done a turn analysis for fire trucks on the plan deck?
Um, we have not, no.
I mean, that, that going around that curve and then making a, a left into lot two, I would be concerned about a truck making, yeah, making that turn.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can speak to it, but I mean, um, I gotta imagine if there was a fire, I don't know if the truck would go into that close to it, but I understand.
Probably the top of, the longest truck, which would be a ladder truck, to turn and try to get as close to the building. Right, so that's, right?
Bas- basically, if, if I may, basically, when I look at this, when the planning board decides what all that is, I no doubt make them discuss this with the fire chief, and use the fire equipment they have. And they have to demonstrate on a plan that all the turny movement is satisfactorily wide enough for the fire trucks, that each fire department uses. So that will no doubt be looked at in great detail, I'm very much a stickler on that, so that would look at.
There's, there's some areas that we may be able to put a, like a grass creed or something, turn around or pull up area.
Yeah. And then from an impervious standpoint, you know, lot two's bearing the, the brunt of the impervious for the two. But I don't know, have you looked at how much you have here over the, overall site development side?
Um, we did a quick general look, but I, I think we're well under, I mean, the, the lot, each lot is six acres or, or more, so.
Okay.
I think we're okay with that.
Does the applicant have a, a preference between the two?
Um, no, the, the, either one is fine, I mean, they're, they're, they're both workable.
Okay, I was just wondering if the-
I, I mean-
The long driveway and, and across number two, if that's a, a problem, you know, marking and otherwise.
Right, right, this is, this is tougher to sell and tougher, um, I, I believe the board has brought up that, you know, if this guy has a party and there's, there's cars along there, and maybe twelve o'clock at night, people are leaving, and there's, you know, people are sleeping, could be an issue, so I think this is probably the preferred option.
The, okay. Any thoughts? This is our, our turn to give thoughts on this, so that we can give the, the applicant some guidance.
I mean, originally, part of the problem was the single curb cut in the long driveways, which we've talked about. And also, I think we talked about last time, there was some concern about the speed of traveling on one twenty-eight and the line of sight. If we had four driv- If we had four driveways, could be kind of difficult. So that's why we kind of were still entertaining two, two curb cuts or maybe even three. I do like option A better than B just for the simple reason that I felt that big driveway traversing the neighbors was going to be a problem. Um and here, this solution does start to address that. I'm still not in love with the the with the big grade that's happening on lot one. And I appreciate that you made lot one bigger. We talked about the way to fight, to help mitigate the grade was to make one a little bit wider so you had more room to work. But in that, the the building also got bigger. So as the lot got built bigger to help it out, the building got bigger.
And there's a pool now too.
Yeah, and now there's a pool, um which is fine, you know, pools are great.
There's no pool last time? Huh? There was, there was no pool last time. The building did, but I believe the board asked if there was, you know, food added.
There's no pool. We were, because they always come down the line. That's why we asked, could you tell us now so there wasn't an issue in two years?
Right. But I mean, sometimes a lot can't have pool, you know, so neither.
Gotcha. I mean, I I I do think this is heading in a in a better direction uh than what we saw before. And, you know, the the two curb cuts on one twenty eight probably is a much safer solution than four. Uh but I'll let Bob chime in on that one.
Yeah, the the state, did you mean Bob Kirkwood or Bob Seoli? I'm sorry.
Seoli.
He wants something intelligent.
No, I wouldn't say that. Um yeah, you know, no doubt about it. The state would definitely walk if we had four curb cuts coming up that road. So people traveling on that road, they're going about seventy miles an hour. And that's a much better design, just having two curb cuts. But I would almost guarantee you they're gonna need some sort of study, get the eighty-five percentile, and they're gonna no doubt wanna see intersection stop inside distance, which could be up to six hundred feet, seven hundred feet long. So um they will no doubt be looking at that. I mean, I'll look at it myself, but the state does make the final say. Obviously, it's a state road, yes. But two curb cuts along that stretch is much better than I know that about it.
So on the curb cut for lots three and four, just from my education, is there a reason why it's not right down the middle on the property line? And it's more so on one person's property than the other?
Um.
Just trying to think about easements and agreements between neighbors.
Yep.
Maybe if it's kind of split as fifty fifty as possible, they, then there's never dispute over who's responsible for it.
I don't think that's an issue. We can, we can do that.
Okay.
That's a good point, Greg. These lot of older subdivision I've seen in the past, when they do have the common driveways amongst two lots, it does split it right down the middle.
So makes it a lot easier for the easement agreement.
And the the one and two, the reason why most of it is there is the grade is is what you're trying to accommodate for?
Yes, the grade, the grade
Right.
Right here is extremely steep, so we're just trying to get a, get around that. The existing house that was here was up in this area, on the high part of, up in the.
Right on the road.
Right, it was really close to the road.
Bob, as it relates to the curb cuts, do you have a preference between the ones that's shown on B? That's roughly two hundred feet between the two versus on A that looks like four hundred plus?
Well, you know, the state's gonna look at the clear site distance coming back about twelve feet from the edge of pavement going north and south. Uh I don't think that's really gonna matter too much as long as there's no obstructions from the driveway looking north uh for that intersection site distance, which could, based on the speed here, is probably about seven miles an hour. So that's gonna go up to about six hundred, but I don't think those two driveways would impact each other. We had as long as a dynamic site distance along that whole corridor amongst the whole four lot subdivision is cleared.
Okay. Anyone else saying?
We also, I don't know if this, we we talked about access for the back of the property as part of the public space. But we also talked about not having people cut from one twenty eight all the way across. Maybe there was access on the back of the lot. Did you go and talk to your client about that?
I don't know how you get there.
I think there was just a, I think it was people could just walk the trail that are already to the, to the, yeah, over there.
Yeah.
You're saying to to
Just like a loop in there.
Let them come into here.
Just like, yeah, just like a loop in there. There was a discussion.
Yeah.
And I think we left it that you were gonna maybe go talk to your client about.
Um yes, he was thinking about it.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, this, honestly, this is like no man's land.
That's what we were thinking.
So.
That's where they usually send me if you want to go to your clients.
Yes.
Dennis, you had some thoughts. Uh I I know this is very preliminary, but you had some thoughts.
Thank you, Sean. Um yeah, so I just wanted to give you the heads up. Thank you for the comment regarding the the trees, just, you know, considerations and the board. Uh I just wanted it to be clear at this point that, you know, obviously, whatever cut and fill potential that there is, I recommend none of that goes into the weapon bumper. So, you know, you're gonna squeeze the bit, obviously, with respect to, you know, what you have here. And then, you know, of course, you know, just kind of echoing, you know, my sentiments, you know, prior to and that's assuming that, you know, whatever you encounter is actually allowed to to remain on site, um you know, based on uh historical use to the property and even the quality of what's there. And those are my comments.
Yep. Jeff, I think you you brought that up last time about.
Yeah, yes, we we've initiated, um started the process getting a a phase one.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Um we're satisfied with the direction we're going in, so I guess at this point, yeah, I I think that is what we're hearing as a preference. And so I guess from now, if you start to have the usual hard work for it.
Yeah, okay.
Can we go forward from there?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh next item is a request for an extension of time. This is the Chapel Cave Central School District. This is an application for including our subdivision plan, Steve Schoen permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um it was approved way back in nineteen and requested from the applicant for another extension.
Correct. Uh good evening. The record, my name is Daniel Patrick for the law office of Cutie and Fader. As indicated, we are seeking a another six-month extension of the progress plan approval. Um as you know, this subdivision was approved several years ago. It's been, you know, ongoing, a number of issues that have come up. The applicant has some outstanding comments from the New York City DEP. Um as you're aware, there's also pending litigation with regard to the project. Um the applicant has entered into a contract to sell, sell the project and that's kind of tied up in the courts right now. And I, I'm just, I'll preface by saying that our our firm is not representing the applicant in the court proceeding, but we are representing for land use proceeding. So uh I don't know all of the background as it relates to the court proceeding, but I was able to speak to the attorney who is handling the litigation. And I'm told that there are cross motions for summary judgment that are due at the end of this month. And they're hoping to have either a settlement or a court decision by the end of December. So we're moving along in that process. That's largely gonna dictate what this subdivision looks like going forward. I think so. You know, we're just asking for another six-month extension to allow us to continue planning out behind the scenes. And hopefully we can come back in a few months and give you another update or, you know, move the application forward.
Um how much progress have we made with DEP? I know for a while they were really coming at you with different issues. Have we satisfied almost all of those at this point or most of those?
Hmm I don't know for sure. Again, that's a separate firm who's handling the DEP application, but uh I believe there are still some comments outstanding. So the subdivision plan, as it was approved, is likely to to continue going through some modifications as they work.
Bob, do you have any, or Sabrina, do you have any updated information from DEP on this, where they are? No? Okay. Great.
I just have a question.
Sure.
If you can answer this, I'm not sure if you can. Is the litigation with the town or with a private entity?
It's a private entity.
Okay, thank you.
Well, because you say that you expect potentially summary judgment at the end of the summer or in December?
End of summer, sorry.
Okay.
That's what I'm told. I'm just relaying what I've been advised, so I can attest any specific deadlines.
Okay. Uh any other discussion questions? If not, is there a motion to grant the extension sought by the applicant?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we come now to our next item. This is an amendment to the resolution of approval. This is for the Fox Hollow Sewer Company River Woods Community Association. Uh this is for the Mount Disco Sewer System Improvement along Brooklyn Avenue in that area. Application for Site Development Plan Approval, Wetlands Permit, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So we last heard this and approved it back in, I haven't heard it since December twenty one. Oh no, time was running. Anyway, uh John, can you fill us in on what we're we're doing here this evening?
In this, they're asked, there's an issue that arose concerning the, there's an issue that arose concerning the uh bond that needs to be in place to protect the town and in line, the street old opening permit that needs to be issued. What they're asking for is permission to move forward with the with the building permit and the and the work and not touch the street until that bond is in place so that they can just get moving, you know. They still can't work in the road until the perm, the bond's in place, but they just don't wanna wait while this delays them.
So we're just essentially switching the resolution, switching the order of when the the building permit will be granted for the roadway itself, the public roadway.
Right.
Until we have a bond in place. And um once that's done.
Then they can do the work in the road.
Right. But meantime, they will not, they're gonna refrain from doing work in the road.
Right, they can do other projects can be.
So this will give them the green light to do that other work because this is a project that the town has been looking to do for for years. A very important project, so we don't wanna hold it up.
Exactly. It it's it's not something that should hold up the project.
Right.
But it's, you know, but will be protected when, before it does.
Right. So it's it's again kind of a ministerial change, uh really to accommodate uh the applicant who's a public applicant to to do this work. Uh again, Sabrina knows the history on this. This this has taken a lot, many, many years to get this done. And this is a very important project for that part time. So um I guess what we have is um before us is the amended resolution, which makes that change. Uh that John and Sabrina and staff and staff have drawn up for us.
Bob, Bob deserves a lot of credit on that.
I did not bring up the idea to try to work with it, so I get enormous pressure from everyone, the contractor and the supplier stuff. I come up with, we got one idea, maybe you want some.
This was it, thank Bob.
This was it? Okay.
You're prior now.
So noted in the minutes.
See you next time.
I have a special agenda item from now on. Bob's idea.
Of the month.
Of the month, right. Good, thank you.
No, it's actually with the help of everyone else. It's a team, team effort. Thanks, Dylan.
Good. I'm sorry, Bob, but I slid it to you. Okay, is there a motion to grant um to amend this resolution?
Sub move.
Second? I can't do this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're all set on that. And then the last item we have are the minutes of April sixteen. Uh I had a couple of minor changes, which I'll just send over to you.
Please.
Anyone have any changes subsequent to that?
I got one, one change on page five of six, line forty-nine.
Okay.
Uh Mr. Sensary stated he would like to see, let's add the design and strike a metal. Do the design and finish strike on the replacement of the canopy. Strike poles for to be consistent with the architecture of the building. So Mr. Sensary stated he would like to see the design and the finish of the canopy to be consistent with the architecture of the building.
Got it.
Good. Anyone else saying?
Um page one, line eleven, I think it's, shouldn't it be virtual? It should be alternate present?
Yes.
Yeah.
You are correct. Sorry.
No worries.
I saw the word Jeff. I had no idea who he was talking about. Okay, with those amendments, is there uh um whatever?
Motion?
A motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.